Hello, everybody. Thank you for tuning in for a brief, hopefully, brief preview of what's going to come up for our special town meeting that's coming up on Monday night, October 20th, at seven o'clock in the high school auditorium. We are expecting that we could have a bit of a crowd come, so I suggest you come early. And we will have an overflow room in case the meeting exceeds the capacity of the auditorium. That overflow room will be in the cafeteria this time. In the past, we have done the gym, but on Monday night, the girls volleyball team is having a senior night game, and we wanted to make sure we made the gym available for them for that particular game. So the overflow will be down in the cafeteria. If you are seated in the cafeteria, you'll be able to see everything that's going on in the main meeting through our wonderful work of Todd Goodwin and our IT department. If you want to speak on an article, you will have to come to the main room, to the auditorium, to be able to speak so that everybody can hear you. So I think that's gives us the basics for what's going to come up for town meeting. It's always hard to say how long town meeting is going to go. We have a couple of fairly significant articles on this warrant. I don't know that would go past two nights. I don't know that we could finish in one night, so be prepared to go, come back on Tuesday, and with any luck, we'll be able to finish up for Monday. So with that being said, any comments?
No, I'm looking forward to hopefully doing it in one night, but if we don't, we're available for two.
That's what that's what is. And I don't know that we introduced ourselves. So I'm Jim Fitzgerald, the town moderator.
And I'm Attorney Robert Galvin, I'm the town council.
Okay. And Bob and I end up working hand in hand when we're doing town meeting. I consult him frequently to make sure of the legality of the procedure that's happening, and he's there nudging me, telling me when I'm doing things and when I'm doing things that should be perhaps done slightly differently than the way that I've gone about doing things. So we keep ourselves on the straight path and making sure that we're making town meeting what it should be, which is a legal binding meeting of the townspeople who are voting on articles that are warranted ahead of time, that people have warned, that's the town meeting warrant, and that impact our town in various ways. So with that being said, we can get into the articles?
Excellent. Thank you. So I'll probably take the lead in just kind of going through them and introducing them, and some are going to be pretty simple, and the others might be a little bit more complex, but I'll try to keep it as simple as possible. Each year at our special town meeting, we have an article like Article One, which is a list of unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year. And in a special town meeting, we have to approve those bills by a nine-tenth vote because they existed in a prior, prior calendar year or fiscal year for us, excuse me. And we try to minimize that, but it's unfortunate fact that sometimes we don't get the bills in by the close of the fiscal year each year, and we have to go back and appropriate money. So this year, we do have some. It's significantly less than it's been in other years. It's $13,000, and we have a chart in the warrant that indicates what all those bills are and the date of the invoice, and it's pretty self-explanatory. And the money to pay these this year is going to come predominantly from free cash, with a small amount of money coming from water and solid waste retained earnings.
A couple of things on that topic. The unpaid bills, and this is a question that comes up fairly regularly, is, you know, why didn't we pay them? And in most cases, it's because that the vendor either didn't bill us on time to make it into our fiscal year, or something came up on our end of things and the bill might have been missed, but typically, it's a late bill that comes from a vendor. The other piece I think we should talk briefly about is free cash. And what free cash is, is a sum of money that's certified by the state that basically is the, it comes from our tax payments that once we have paid all of our bills and we have taken care of all of our obligations, this is the money that's left over from the billing cycle of the previous year. So in this year, we have about six and a half million?
I think it's close to $7 million. I don't remember the exact figure, but it's close to seven.
Six and a half million dollars. So we essentially paid, we selected, collected six and a half million dollars more than we ended up spending in our budget from last year, and therefore, that becomes what the state calls free cash. And that free cash is money that's available to be spent outside of our usual budgeting process. And that's an important thing. It's, you know, free cash, it's not free. We paid the money in, the town, we, the taxpayers provided this money. It didn't come from nowhere. But that ends up allowing us to do things in the special town meeting in the fall to take care of projects that we couldn't fit into our regular budget, or that were originally suggested to be like capital items that are one-time expenses. So that's what free cash is.
Correct. And we have it defined in the definition section of the warrant.
Right.
So Article Two represents something that we also often see at a town meeting, in a special town meeting, and when we've reached agreements with one of our bargaining units, we ratify and confirm the contract and appropriate money for the contract. And in this particular case, the select board has settled a contract that's been pending for a couple of years with the firefighters in Marshfield, and we're going to appropriate a sum of money and ratify the settlement by approving the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters.
Right.
So that's a three-year contract that began on July 1st, 2023. It ends next year. The sum of money that's being appropriated here is a million dollars, just over a million dollars, and that satisfies the increased contractual obligations for the past two and a half and current fiscal year.
Right.
Article Three is a change, Article Three and Four are related to one another. These are an annual increase for the personnel that work in the town hall that are not members of collective bargaining units. And this year, there is a 2% raise, which is equivalent to what the unions received, and this is how we appropriate the money for them, these non-union employees.
Correct.
So it's a, you're being asked to approve a 2% increase for these non-union employees. Article Four is related. It's a change to our bylaws. We're changing some of the full-time and part-time and seasonal positions by changing their position class and compensation schedules. They are highlighted in yellow in the brief, excuse me, in the warrant, and they're pretty straightforward. The select board have supported this article two to one. Mr. Kelly continued to have a couple of questions that he wanted answered prior to town meeting, and he may have that answer. But again, this is proposed by the select board, excuse me, in order to properly qualify and classify some of the important positions that we have in town government that are principally non-union.
And one note for Article Four. Karen Paulette, who's our veterans agent, had asked, for those of you who might be new to town meeting, we usually do our financial articles in one go at the front of the meeting in our annual warrant. Those are the first five or six articles. And then after that, everything becomes a watery. And we've got the bingo ball thing, and we pull articles out. We can move forward certain articles if we choose to do so, and Karen Paulette, the veterans agent, asked me to move Article Four forward to be one of the first articles because the veterans team has a meeting the following day, and they've got to leave the evening after the meeting to make, be able to make it to their venue for the following day's meeting. So she asked me to move this forward so that it wasn't going to happen until the end of the night. So just when you see that come up, if you're at a town meeting, the reason this is being brought forward is because Karen asked to do so, and the veterans are, it's a wonderful group, and they really don't ask ever for anything, so I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Article Five is expenditure of some of that free cash that Jim spoke about a little while ago. It's for some capital outlay and some other employment positions, some sick leave buyback, some PFAS turnout gear for the fire department, and some expenses for maintenance, for facilities management, and interestingly, a design for the North River, South River Shoaling dredging project, and an HPE switch replacement. And we'll have a very brief presentation, and there'll be some capital budget recommendations at town meeting. I think they're meeting tonight to approve those items. But the sum total that will be spent is in the warrant. It's $1,205,824.93.
And what will happen during town meeting is, so this is, there's eight or 10 different articles. When we go to this article and discuss it at town meeting, I will read those, each individual line item, and then allow people to question them if they have more questions on why are we looking to purchase or buy this service or this item. So they can either be, if no, there's no questions, we just go over them and we vote them at the end. If there's questions, we come back and revisit the ones that are questioned so that people can be satisfied with the information that they get to be able to make their vote.
Okay. Article Six is a new provision for us. It's proposing to accept the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 13E, which was, which would enable the town to establish a special education reserve fund. It's an article by the school committee. It's pretty apparent to them on an annual basis that we have a fluctuating, fluctuating amount of demand on our special education resources, and this is an effort by the school committee to create a fund that can be expended without further appropriation at town meeting with a majority vote of the school committee and the select board.
Right.
And this article is not supported by the, by the Board of Selectmen, but it is a school committee proposal, so the town meeting will either adopt that or not by a majority vote at town meeting.
Okay.
Article Seven is a school roof project appropriation and expenditure with a contingency. It's been pretty apparent, and the school committee has been upfront about the problems that we have with the Martinson School Roof. Apparently, we've put it off for a couple of years. We've got an MSBA application in. My understanding, they've agreed to give a grant to the town in approximately $3.5 million. The specifics will be provided by the school committee, but in the meantime, we have to appropriate or borrow this money. It'll be reimbursed to us by the MSBA, and it is subject to what they call a debt exclusion vote, which will be scheduled by the select board at some time if this article passes town meeting. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of other resources. It's always nice to be eligible from a, from an MSBA grant perspective. It is free money. It doesn't have to be repaid, but we have to have the initial outlay approved by us. So that is a borrowing article with a two-thirds majority vote, and it enjoys the unanimous support of the select board, and the capital budget committee will vote on it tonight.
Right. So one thing to note, this is maybe another article I bring forward. We've got Karen Paulette's article, Article Four, the personal bylaw article, and the article for the MBTA, which is going to have a lot of people coming to the meeting, I think. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. But Article Seven is also one where I think this is going to be of interest to a large number of people because it's a debt exclusion. And to be a little clear, I mean, people refer to this as an override. It's not an override. When we do an override, an override is a permanent increase in the tax base. A debt exclusion is a specific project override. So this, it's an override, or it's an additional cost in your taxes, but it's only for a fixed period of time. So I don't know what this period is. It's 20 or 30 years?
I don't, I don't know what the borrowing is, but remember, if this article is approved and it passes the debt exclusion, we will be reimbursed about half of the project.
Yeah.
So the debt exclusion amount, which the school committee will be prepared to present, will be explained to you, and that amount of additional increase will be added to the tax bill, but it will disappear when it's paid off.
Right. So that's one of the things to note, and although this, this article, the roof project is a $7,851,000 project, 3.5 million-ish is going to come back from the Mass State Building Authority, Mass Base School Building Fund.
Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you.
Yep. And the amount was actually reduced. We've got some updated figures from the state, and the amount that we'll need to borrow now is $7,406,864. It went down, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars.
But there's a big difference between a debt exclusion and an override. So I wanted to make sure that people are aware of what that was.
Correct. Okay. Article Eight is an interesting article. It'll be presented by the open space committee and Susan Karen, who I think is going to have a brief slideshow. This is concerns the Veterans Park that's on the main street, across the street from South, across the street from McDonald's. There's an existing park there. A couple of years ago, the town acquired the Abutting Parcel, and this is a proposal to fund the reconstruction of that property and expand the existing park into that property, all in compliance with the American Disabilities Act. They have a beautiful plan. It's community preservation funds. This project has already been vetted by the Community Preservation Committee, and as a result, appears in the warrant here. We explain in the article, you know, how the money's going to be funded from the community preservation basically funds, and it seems like a very interesting project that people can say yes or no to. Article Nine is a land acquisition article in North Marshfield, close to where the Marshall Hills Garage on the opposite side of the street. There's an 18-acre parcel. It's been recently permitted by a private developer for, I think it's at least a 10-lot subdivision on 18 acres. The open space committee observed this going on, saw the potential environmental impact. There's extensive town land in that area, and extensive land owned by the Audubon Society, I think both, on both sides of the street. And the acquisition of this land will basically preserve that entire view on that side and preserve a pretty sensitive habitat area, an extensive wetland area, which was going to be filled with tens of thousands of Cupicats material. And there does appear to be enough land at the beginning of the property to have one affordable housing lot. So I think the plan is to acquire this property, is subject to the town meeting's vote, create an affordable housing unit on the property, and the rest of it will be permanently protected with an open space conservation restriction, and that I think the open space committee has arranged with one of the trusts that hold these restrictions.
Yeah. And if you're, you know, if you're paying any attention to the way the town works, there's always new developments coming in, and people say, well, why don't we pick up that land and prevent the developments from happening? This is a perfect situation where you've got conservationally and all-around this parcel. So we're just continuing the conservation land that's already there and enabling us to put a little bit of a limit on growth, and if we get to create an affordable housing unit out of the whole thing, it's that much better, but.
Yeah, and it does have another incidental benefit to the town if approved, and we've always been trying to make 1.5% of our developable land protected. And if we have 1.5% of our land in affordable housing, and we do that by actually reducing the available land to develop, we can gain a permanent safe harbor from chapter, the effects of Chapter 40B.
Right.
This is an important cog in what I understand is we're nearing that 1.5% figure.
One of the problems we have with 40Bs, and if you're familiar with that, that's the affordable.
I call it the comprehensive permit law. It's the easiest way to look at it.
Comprehensive permit law. So developers come in and they can't do the development the way they want to do it based on the current zoning. They can use the comprehensive development law to go through and.
Bypass.
Bypass local zoning. One of the components of that is they need to create affordable housing. And so long as we are below the threshold for affordable housing, that gives the developer the right to come in and do the development under the 40B law, which is the comprehensive development law.
Yeah.
Right now, we're in safe harbor on 40B because we achieved the threshold we needed to get to on the percentage of affordable units. But as more units get built, that threshold keeps changing, and we could lose, at the next census, we could lose that 40B safe harbor based on the fact that we've built more units than were put aside as affordable. When you get the landmass set aside, you get to that level, not just number of units, this is just land that's set aside as affordable, then there's no, that's forever.
It's a permanent safe harbor for the town. Yeah. And we gained that because we've made such significant progress in developing affordable housing, particularly in the last three or four years. So, okay. Article 10 is a request by the Historical Commission and the Community Preservation to appropriate some money to do renovation work at the Daniel Webster Law Office and Museum, which is located off Kearswell and Webster Streets. Apparently, $65,550 is the sum of money that's needed to perform this specialty type of exterior renovation work. Again, that's from the Community Preservation Funds and their historic reserves. Article 11 is another land purchase article after the last town meeting, but prior to tonight, prior to this warrant, the land at 91 Old Colony Lane, which is improved with half of a historic property or home, became available to the town by the developer. This is a developer that currently has applied for a permit for heliport as a result of discussions and negotiations. The select board and the property owner were able to come to an agreement on a purchase and sale agreement that places this matter in front of the town for approval. The sum purchased is for $735,000. If the property is acquired, the selectmen are putting the precondition on it that the land will only be used for affordable housing or general municipal purposes. This will also have the added effect of settling a lawsuit that exists between the town of Marshfield and this developer arising from the airport's taking of some very small easement areas that they've occupied for approximately 60 years, but did not own. So in addition to controlling this property, which is really the last available parcel of land in the airport district that we do not own, this will have the added effect of preventing, if approved, the proposed heliport. So Article 12 is an article that follows a change in local law, excuse me, state law relating to the sale of alcoholic beverages. And if you are the holder of a wine and malt beverage, which is also known as beer and wine beverage license for, for a restaurant, but you always wanted to have an opportunity to have a full alcoholic beverages license, the adoption of this law allows the select board to allow you to convert that existing license to a full alcoholic license. The town of Marshall has a quota for both beer and wine and full alcoholic beverage licenses. This is an exception, 12D to Chapter 138, which allows a non-transferable conversion of a wine and malt beverage license. Can't be sold to somebody else. It reverts back to a wine and malt beverage license, but it does allow people that sometimes have to wait a very long time for an available license to sell all, all alcoholic beverages. Articles 13, 14, and 15 don't need any introduction because we've talked about them a lot at prior town meetings, at least two of them, and they're the MBTA articles. They're the changes to the bylaw itself by the creation of a district, adding to our table of uses and our, change to our zoning map. I believe the intention is, if these are not indefinitely postponed by a town meeting vote, to make a collective motion, collective presentation, and give the people a chance to vote expeditiously at the beginning of the town meeting.
Correct.
This is a majority vote article, not a typical zoning vote of two-thirds.
So this is the euphemism, euphemism is the MBTA article. I think most people in town are fairly aware of what that is. I have heard there could be a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
By a private citizen.
By a private citizen. If that comes up, then I will take that motion before we get into discussion. I will let the presentation take place by the planning board, I believe, correct?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to allow the presentation to take place first and then entertain the motion.
And that's from the planning board?
Planning board has a presentation, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it wasn't Andrew Stewart, because.
I don't know, I don't know, I believe it's by the planning board.
Okay. So the planning board, and I'm going to advance this article to being one of the first articles. So there'll be a presentation from the planning board. If the citizen, I haven't, I saw an email that came through, but I haven't heard confirmation that this is going to happen of, of motion to postpone, indefinitely postpone the article. We'll take that up, and then if that passes, then we'll go on, and this will be postponed to a future date, or not at all, indefinitely postponed. And then for all those three articles, 13, 14, and 15, they'll just be, that'll be done. If not, we'll get into a discussion, and this is going to be a lively discussion. There are strong passions on both sides of this, and we'll try to give everybody a good chance to, to say what they want to say. We'll try to keep it, we've had this discussion two other times, so there's, we'll try to keep it so that it's as brief as it reasonably could be, let's say.
I think it's probably fair to discuss today, you know, you know, why is it back again in a very brief way?
Yes.
The town last voted on this on December 16th of 2024, and since that time, the Supreme Judicial Court decided the Milton case on January 8th, 2025, in which it ruled that the MBTA communities law was constitutional, could be enforced beyond the loss of grant funds that were identified in the statute, and rejected the Housing and Livable Communities guidelines. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities had been working on for quite a long period of time some guidelines, which they were authorized by statute to create, but they failed to comply with the State Administrative Procedures Act in the creation of those guidelines, which basically had the purported effect of being law as regulations. So the SJC set those aside. Six days later, they enacted those guidelines as emergency regulations in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Act. They took public comment, and those guidelines became permanent. Interestingly, also, the state auditor's office has a division of local mandates, and in February, they determined that the act itself constituted an unfunded mandate, and that prompted the town to take legal action against the state and the housing and livable communities, and we filed a lawsuit in February of 2025. The Commonwealth responded on behalf of itself and housing and livable communities by filing a motion to dismiss. We had argument in the motion to dismiss on April 2nd, 2025, and on June 4th, the Superior Court Plymouth County dismissed the town of Marshfield's case with an extensive written decision, as well as several other communities that filed suit after Marshfield did. The select board met, reviewed the decision with me, and we elected to take an appeal. That appeal is pending in the Superior, excuse me, in the appeals court in Massachusetts. The select board also asked us to, asked the Supreme Judicial Court to take a direct appellate review of this matter, and that request is still pending. We filed our appellate brief today in the appeals court, and hopefully, we can get that up so everybody could read it and understand the issues that were appealing. But the other thing that's pretty important to note is that the Attorney General's Office has indicated that any community that is not in compliance with the act, and that's Marshfield at this particular point, will be the subject of enforcement action in January of 2026. So with all those changes and circumstances, the matter is back on the warrant to give the people the right to decide whether to, whether they've changed their mind or not.
Right. And one of the things that I've read is people say, we already said no. NOVA said previously to the conditions that were understood at that particular time, the conditions have changed.
Correct. There was sentiment at the last town meeting in December that, you know, we don't know what the SJC was going to do. what the SJC was going to do.
Right.
And there were a whole bunch of other sentiments that you see, you know, online and probably in discussions with colleagues and friends, and Marshfield voters decide whether this passes or not, and that's what we're intending to do again.
Yeah. And as new information comes in, it makes it pertinent to bringing the situation back up because some critical elements, you know, one of which being that the law is constitutional, and that's a ruling from the SJC, that that changes the dynamic. So that's why it's being brought forward again. Whichever side of the fence you're on, these are the reasons why it's being brought up again.
Yeah. And, you know, it's a passionate debate, and a lot of people have a lot of opinions, and, you know, you should try to stay informed if you can, and, you know, the town is a democracy, and we vote with where the majority goes on this issue. So that takes us through thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Article sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are all mapping changes, and my understanding is that the Planning Board will be moving to indefinitely postpone them. There's been some discussion and debate about whether these changes are a good idea or a bad idea, or accurate or not accurate, and I believe as a result, the Planning Board wishes to take more time to discuss them. Basically, some of the mapping that's referenced in our zoning bylaw relates to maps that are very old. There's a belief that some of the resource areas that are at issue and defined by those maps have changed. There's some debate about whether they have changed, and I think the Planning Board wants to make sure that people have an adequate opportunity to understand why and whether they should change before they bring this to the voters.
Okay.
So I'll leave those three articles alone again, because otherwise we'll just spend too much time on them, and it may not be the subject of much, of any debate at all. Article nineteen is a word change in our zoning bylaw that requires a two-thirds vote. The state used to have a public agency known as the Department of Housing and Community Development. That agency has changed its name. It's now known as the Department of Housing, excuse me, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So this is a bylaw change to change the word of a non-existent agency to the successor entity. There are no substantive changes to the bylaw, just changes in the name of an entity. Again, two-thirds vote on that article. Article twenty is a similar type of a change. The town used to have an organization known as the Housing Partnership. The Housing Partnership was an advocacy group for affordable housing in the town of Marshfield, appointed by the Select Board. The Housing Partnership did a terrific job for many years advocating for affordable housing in the town of Marshfield, but it had some limitations. In the meantime, the state responded with a new law, which we've since adopted, which allowed municipalities to establish municipal affordable housing trusts, and we did establish it. And again, appointed by the Select Board, this organization has the authority to do the things that the Housing Partnership really needed the authority to do, and that was to acquire property, hold money, act like a regular business trust within the ambit of town government. So it cured some of the problems that existed with the Housing Partnership and performs all of their functions and more.
Yep.
So this is just replacing the words Housing Partnership in a fleet locations existing in the bylaw because sometimes when funds are received in support of affordable housing, the bylaw refers to that money going to the Housing Partnership, which doesn't function or functionally exist anymore.
Again, it's more of a name change than.
It is a name change.
Not substantive, changing anything else.
I get tired of referring to them as housekeeping changes because it kind of doesn't do it justice.
Right.
So. Article twenty-one is a change to the bylaw to recognize the fact that there are three areas of the town that are considered mixed-use districts, even though the language of the bylaw describes the planned mixed-use development and the Brant Rock Ovalay District as mixed-use districts. All of the language of the bylaw that refers to mixed-use districts didn't include the planned mixed-use development district and the Brant Rock Ovalay District, so this is adding, making the bylaw wholly consistent. No substantive change, just means that it's worded correctly. Article twenty-two is a modification of a current use that's described as a either use by right or a special permit. In our table of uses, they're updating the current definition to remove aircraft from the use category and combining motor vehicle sales with motor vehicle repairs, because it's become customary now for people that sell vehicles to repair them. As a matter of fact, it's required when you're selling used vehicles. So there's an updating of the definition. It also removes those types of uses from the residential business district and leaves it as a permitted use in the BTU district and allows it in the B-three district and by right in the industrial district. So there's some changes in the use categories and how it's allowed in some districts. Again, in recognition of the fact that the Planning Board believes that there's a need for these types of uses in some areas and not others, and the use has evolved. Similar circumstances occurring with article twenty-three, modification of the retail and service number sixteen on the table of use, separating out motor vehicle repairs from gasoline sales, service stations, and the sale of convenience goods. It's a narrowing of the bylaw to make it accurate. Article twenty-four. We have an industrial district where the Planning Board believes there's a need to allow either a boat marina or boatyard. There is a business currently operating in the industrial district that is involved in this general use, and the Planning Board believes that the change would allow that use to exist by special permit in the industrial district. Article twenty-five is similarly a change to the airport district and allows establishments selling new or used aircrafts, aviation fuel sales and servicing as a permitted use in the airport district only. It creates really a separate use category for sales and services in the airport district. There are no other properties other than the property that is currently owned by the town and managed by the Airport Commission. And we talked about the earlier article, that was the last parcel. So if the town acquires that parcel, there'll be no land available for that type of use, except on the airport property itself. Article twenty-six is similar to an earlier article where the Planning Board is proposing to authorize towing services and impound storage in the industrial district by special permit. I believe there is an existing business that's operating there. If the use were permitted by special permit, there's a possibility of legalizing that use. Article twenty-seven is a article being proposed by the Board of Assessors. It's generally known as the Heroes Act. It provides authorization and funding beginning in fiscal two thousand twenty-seven for a hundred percent exemption for certain taxes imposed by the town to veterans. I think you'll have a short presentation by the principal assessor explaining the effectiveness of the act. It's again for a future fiscal year, not the current fiscal year. I heard a figure last night of its value is about forty-something thousand dollars a year in benefits to veterans. Article twenty-eight is a article proposed by the Board of Public Works looking to amend a portion of the general bylaws and prohibiting people from, I would characterize it as unnaturally diverting floodwater or other stormwater onto other persons' properties. The Planning Board, the zoning enforcement officer, building inspector have received complaints about things like this, and the Board of Public Works saw fit in its wisdom to attempt to try to curtail that type of activity. So we're, in this sense, would be more protective of state law than exists because you are allowed to do it as a matter of law, as long as you're not causing any more than de minimis harm. So this is a more stringent bylaw that.
Who would enforce that bylaw?
It is enforced by the Building Commissioner and the Superintendent of Public Works. There'll be a notification provision, and hopefully that would bring people into compliance, and the only penalty at this particular point is a daily fine, and I assume if that persisted after notice and fines, that we would bring a complaint to restrain that type of use.
Yep.
People are always free to bring a claim on their own if they've got an issue like this, but this is the town's effort to try to be of assistance.
Yep.
Okay. Article twenty-nine is an article by the Board of Public Works to update basically our stormwater management bylaw. We have a federal permit that allows stormwater discharge into certain resource areas. In order to maintain that permit and be in compliance with law, we have to update and recodify our stormwater management bylaw to meet those current EPA regulations, and the Planning Board is the, excuse me, the Board of Public Works is the best person to explain it, and there are some permitting requirements where you could conceivably go in front of the Planning Board to get any discretionary approvals. That's kind of a lengthy one, but I do think that the Board of Public Works can explain it in a very, very simple way and explain why it's required by our federal permitting. Article thirty is an article relating to the Willow Street Bridge between the China Walk and the gas station. That bridge is nearing its end of useful life. I expect at a future town meeting, we'll be seeing a request to appropriate money, let's say, receive it from the state, which we're not eligible for right at the moment, to reconstruct the bridge. And in order to reconstruct the bridge in accordance with the plan that has been settled on by the Board of Public Works, we need to make some easement takings and a small fee taking from some of the abutting properties. There's three or four of them that are having very small amounts of land area taken by easement or fee, and all of those takings have been valued by appraisal, and you're being asked to approve those orders of taking and the payment of the sums based on appraisal to the property owners. So that's a two-thirds vote because there's a taking with a appropriation of money. Article thirty-one is a request for supplemental funding for road reconstruction work that is not covered by our chapter ninety money. We're not eligible to get other state money as a supplemental funding under chapter ninety, and I expect that Mr. Patterson or Mr. Ryan, who work for the Department of Public Works, will give a brief presentation as to how they would spend that money, and I believe that the sum of money, if appropriated, would come from free cash. Article thirty-two is a request for supplemental appropriation by the Board of Public Works for the purposes of maintaining town-owned playgrounds, which have been very controversial during the past year. I believe that they use, they intend to use this sum of money to hire an outside contractor to make some repairs to some of the playground equipment, and that again is a sum that's proposed to come from our free cash this year. Article thirty-three is a Board of Public Works article seeking an appropriation of money to purchase a spare wastewater effluent pump. These pumps are critically important to maintain the function of the forced sewer mains. I understand that there's been some issues with at least one of these pumps. In order to get one, you need to have a spare, if necessary, to jump in, and they're proposing to appropriate that from their retained earnings, which is a completely normal and appropriate thing to do. Article thirty-four is a request by the Board of Public Works to purchase some vehicles. Some of these vehicles are older in their fleet. They explain exactly what they're looking for, provided they're available, or alternatively ask for the purchase of equivalent equipment. Some of these will be procured off the state bid list, some of them will be procured potentially independently, but these are the funds that they believe they need to transfer from their retained earnings and a small sum of money from free cash to purchase and update the several vehicles that are identified in the article. Article thirty-five is a citizens petition article by David Carrier, which, as I understand, seeks basically to approve a practice on behalf of the Board of Public Works to grade private ways that are open to the public four times per year rather than the currently existing once or twice per year. The town has public ways, it has private ways that are closed to the public, that we provide no services on, and then this third category, which are private ways open to the public, where the public can travel on it, and our practice has been pursuant to bylaw to fill holes only on those ways. And Mr. Carrier believes, and a number of residents support him in that belief, that we should be doing it four times per year because they're taxpayers. The article can proceed to a vote, however, there's no funding source, and without a funding source, the article is not appropriate, and that's something that I attempted to convey all the way along when I was aware that this was coming. So without a funding source, it's, it can be voted on, but it may have no legal effect.
What'll happen is, and these articles usually come at the end of the warrant for whichever meeting it is, that citizens can create their own article for the town meeting warrant. It's up to them to do their homework and to write their own warrant articles, and when that happens occasionally, the articles are not fully fleshed out. So in this instance, this particular article is.
There's no request for appropriation.
Is suggesting that we should do this extra work, but the money to do the extra work was never requested. So we could vote on this at town meeting and approve it, but nothing could happen because there's no money to go with it, which means that in the future, there could be money set aside for it, or this could be adopted.
Yeah, the article itself is defective because it doesn't have a request for an appropriation.
Right.
The concept is there.
Right.
And I think people understand the concept, but, you know, our articles have to include both the concept and the request for appropriation.
But the other side of that is, we've had articles in the past where the concept wasn't.
Clear or.
In moderated terms, it's referred to as dubious legality.
Yeah.
You've written an article that says, I want to do this, this, and this, but what you're suggesting to do is not a legal thing to have done.
Yeah.
And that, that's not the, it's not the case here.
No.
Which is just a fault of the funding, and that could be something that can get corrected later on.
There aren't limitations on what the town is allowed legally to do on private ways open to the public. Marshfield has adopted a general bylaw that does allow some work on private ways that are open to the public, but that work is specifically limited to filling potholes and things of that nature. So depending on how this is applied, it can and could be, it may and may not be legal, but if it was limited to that type of work, yes.
Yeah, it wasn't suggestive, this one wasn't legal. We've had ones that have been of dubious legality in the past. This one was really just, there was a concept put forward, but not a way to pay to have the work done.
Right.
And that's the failure on that particular article.
Right, right. Article thirty-six is a citizens petition article by Diane Jordan. I think it's in response to an article that was changed at a prior town meeting, which authorized the Select Board to grant licenses for alcoholic beverages in certain public places. I believe this article acts as a limitation on the types of events that can be permitted and limits it to certified fundraising events by nonprofit or charitable organizations, provided the net proceeds are, you know, going to the intended recipient of the charity or are otherwise a public event for the purposes of fostering community fellowship engagement or otherwise open to the general public and not for a private or commercial gain. So it kind of is a slight rollback of what now is discretionary with the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Again, this will be approved or not by the town meeting. The last article is a citizens petition article by resident Pam Keith, in which she creates a bylaw intended to, I believe. a bylaw intended to, I believe, preserve the sanctity of passive parks. She submitted it, as I recall her explaining at the joint advisory and select board meeting, after writing it out on a Sunday afternoon. She seemed to be looking for some type of advice at the joint advisory board, select board meeting, as to whether the article was legal. I mentioned that I believe that we can vote on this, because she submitted it and she got the required signatures, but I do have some concerns, I have some concerns over the language, the vagueness to some of the citations in it, its impact on the executive authority of the select board, and I think some of the misstatements of fact, excuse me, misstatements about what the law says, and its potential conflict with the Public Lands Preservation Act, which is a new law passed in 2022, intended to recognize the protections afforded under Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution to open space lands, but authorizes by state law a process by which land that is subject to this constitutional protection can be converted to another use. The language of this article could run afoul of that, and this'll be going to the Attorney General's office if it passes, and should be reviewed by them for consistency with that state law, and they make that determination, not me as town council. I have a number of other wording changes and things like that, and, you know, I would urge, you know, Ms. Keith to consider bringing that to the Attorney General's office, having it vetted by counsel, or asking the select board to authorize me to provide a formal review, and we could provide comments. But that has not happened at this particular point, and I'm always concerned about the unintended consequences of a bylaw that's not drafted and approved with the assistance of the planning board or some other governmental authority in the town. So, laudable, without a doubt, important, without a doubt, but maybe not worded the way it should be.
So, the process, then, if she were to go and have this reworded, either by you or by the Secretary of State's office, would be to move to postpone the article?
If she chose, she could ask for the article to be indefinitely postponed. She certainly brought this to everybody's attention now, and if the select board wished for us to review it and provide substantive comments and changes, we'll certainly do that. And she's free to engage with, you know, somebody that has some additional experience and might be able to resolve that, those issues, without too much of a problem. And the Attorney General's office has a municipal law unit that this could be sent to, and hypothetically they would consider offering comments on it, particularly for conflict with state law.
So, if this were to go through to a vote and get approved, does it get approved with the language that's there, and if we run into a problem down the road because of whatever the language faults are?
It could be unenforceable.
So, would be, we can, this may be a discussion that we have at town meetings, whether or not she wants to withdraw it temporarily.
Yeah.
And bring it back up at the following town meeting. If she were to do that, because you have to have signatures to be able to get your article on the town meeting warrant.
It could be sponsored by a town board between now and the next town meeting.
So, but if we're to come back up, can she have it back on a warrant by right, because she's already submitted the signatures?
She could submit it at the annual town meeting, which only require ten signatures.
Yeah, okay.
And that warrant will reopen in the wintertime and be open for a couple of weeks. So, it's possible between October and January that there could be some substantive changes that would protect what she's looking to accomplish and what is necessary in order to survive some scrutiny.
Right.
So, those are the articles that we have for the warrant this year for town meeting, and, you know, I think you're a hundred percent right, that, you know, we have some ones that are going to attract a lot of attention and some passionate debate, hopefully, and we have others that are fairly routine and, but are equally important. And, you know, the observation, I think, that we all have is that it's really important for people to come if they want their voices to be heard. There are, this, all of this business is critically important to all of us. We all live here, and we want the right things to be done for the town, and if you're not there, you don't have a say.
Government is a contact sport. You need to show up. You can't just be home and watching the meeting on TV and yelling at the screen about all the awful things that are happening and not be here to take part. I get two quick stories to that, one of which was, there was a meeting years ago about some work that was going to get done at the library, and we were getting to, it was a heated debate, more so than we, than I had anticipated. And when we were getting ready to actually make the vote, we closed the doors to the auditorium, and that's what we needed to before we made the vote. And just before the vote, the vote took place, somebody comes running into the room and sat down, and the doors closed, we had the vote, and the article passed by one vote. And the gentleman who had come in was friends with the people on the library committee and realized that they were going to have a battle on their hands, and ran down to town meeting and showed up, and the pass because he showed up and took, took a chance to do it, which, which is a big part of what goes on, is you need to show up.
Yeah.
And another time, I had a neighbor who stopped me at the end of my driveway and rolled down the window of his car and asked me what had happened at town meeting on a particular article, and he started going off and complaining about the fact that that was a horrible decision, and, oh my God, I can't believe that happened. And I asked him, I said, "Did you show up at town meeting?" And he said, "No, I didn't go." I said, "Well, then you have nothing to say about it, because you didn't take part. You know, your vote might have made all the difference."
Yeah.
So, your votes may make all the difference. If you don't, if you see anything within the warrant, and you can see the warrant online, townofmarshfield.org, you can go and find the warrant online, you can take a look at the articles, decide whether any of them move you to the point that you want to actually take part, and I hope one of them finds that, that thing that makes you jump off your seat and show up at town meeting. But please do participate. You know, there's, there's never a bad thing going to happen with more people showing up, because in a typical town meeting, we have maybe, in a big first night...
Three or four hundred.
Three or four hundred people for twenty-five thousand voters, I think, something like that.
And an appropriation of a hundred and thirty million dollars.
Yeah.
Concerning assets that are worth probably four billion dollars.
Yeah, so you're, you're paying your taxes and letting four or five hundred people decide how your money's going to be spent. Is that what you want to do? So, we hope that people show up. The more the merrier, really. It's great to have a full house, it's great to have people that are new there, it's really good theater, if nothing else. And it's important, and this is how we protect our town, it's how we encourage our town to be better than it is, is making sure that we do what's, what we think is right for the town, and the town is, manifests what we believe a town should look like. And this is a pretty amazing town, and an old friend says, "We won the cosmic lottery when we moved to Marshfield," and we all did, and it's up to us to keep that lottery safe and sound, so.
Yeah, I'd just kind of add, you know, if you lived somewhere else before you came to the town of Marshfield, and you had people that represented you and made these types of decisions, or you lived in a city where a mayor and a council make a decision, they meet all the time, and they make decisions probably on a weekly basis, and there's some efficiencies to that. But in the former town government that we have, every resident has a say in what we make decisions on, and we only do this twice a year, typically two nights a year, and it is just really that important, if you want to have a say on how your town is governed and the decisions on how a hundred and thirty million dollars are going to be spent and what your priorities are. It's really important to come and be heard and debate and listen and get informed, and we're one of the unique town meetings that we take a lot of questions and try to answer those questions, and, you know, some people, it's the first time they've opened the warrant, and other people are politically motivated, and they've come to all the several meetings that precede a town meeting, and they know what's going on. It's, it's really important to come, so you can have a say in what happens in town.
Get informed, look at all the different sources of where you can get information these days. Unfortunately, we no longer have a really a local newspaper, which is where we were able to get...
The Patriot Legion does have a section that's occasionally involves Marshfield stories. The website did change, by the way, it's marshfield-ma.gov now.
There you go.
And the town meeting information is right on the first page when you open the link to that, marshfield.ma.gov.
Like you said, he always keeps me on the straight and narrow, so this is why I rely on Bob. But try to get the real information on what's going on in town. There's a lot of stuff that gets put out there on social media sites, it's not always the correct information. I know that's shocking, but it happens. And it's hard to get the right information. Reach out to your local selectmen, reach out to other people you know for town officials that can give you some backup, do your homework, and make an informed decision, whichever way that goes. I really don't care whether I agree with your position or don't agree with your position, I only agree, I only, my only concern is that it's an informed decision, and you have done it of your own free will, and that this is what you believe. And I think that's a big part of what makes Marshfield so special, is there are a lot of people, there's a lot of different viewpoints. People can be very impassioned when they show up at town meeting, and that's what it's all about.
Agreed. Look forward to seeing everybody next Monday night.
Yep. Thank you very much.